And you are all set to go.
This is it?
This is it.
You're ready to go, Pat, whenever you want.
I just put everything up on my screen.
Esther, you have a halo over your head.
Oh. That's nice, yeah. I'm happy. It looks that way.
Okay, being Wednesday, May 18th, 2022 at 6:30 and having quorum, I'll open the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting up for this evening. First item on the agenda is call to order. And then we have a public meeting scheduled. The public meeting is for the purpose of the Planning Board review and adoption of the Bridgewater Comprehensive Master Plan, May 2022. Before that, I'll read a quick notice. So we're still under the so we're still under the town managers' directive to not have any in-person meetings until July 1st. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted for this meeting, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours, we will post a link of the recording to the town's website and/or other town social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board have been saying remotely, I'm Patrick, our school chair, Mr. Raymond Jemian, Ms. Ashton Rojas, and Mr. Michael McDonald, device chair. During this meeting, all votes will be taken via roll call. The following Bridgewater Town staff are also participating remotely, Mrs. Jennifer DeBogrian, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane O'Brien, the Town Planner. This is the, at this point, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. As items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives will be unmuted. We don't have any public hearings this evening. If there is a public hearing or there was, we'll still allow public comment. We just allow, we just ask to use the chat feature to ask you a question by listing your name and address. Now, the host will recognize all questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature in this menu as well. And you'll be unmuted when the host recognizes you. Again, if anybody is asking questions or making comments, please state your name and address before doing so. If you're on the phone, you can now start nine to raise your hand. Back to the agenda. So again, we have first up on the agenda is the Planning Board review and adoption of the Bridgewater Comprehensive Master Plan. So I'll turn it over to staff and we can go from there.
So, as you know, you've had a couple of different meetings with our consultant, Barrett Planning Group. Our last meeting, I thought, was very productive and you had some conversations with them and then they provided, you know, sort of a two-page, I believe it was, list of just word changes that the board reviewed and provided the okay on. So the document that was provided to you, I believe it was last week, was the culmination and final draft of all of that work that's been done between the public, the committee and the board. And, you know, at this point, we would just ask if there's no other issues or questions that the board vote to adopt the master plan so we can move to start implementing some of the items within the master plan.
So why don't we start with board comments, questions?
No questions here.
I asked it. I couldn't hear. Did you say you had something? I don't know.
Yeah, I said no questions here.
Thank you.
I'll say one thing. I mean, I'll vote without this plan. I just felt, I just feel that my question regarding the planning board's role in the makeup of the plan and the review of the plan has never really been clarified. I'm based on Mass General Laws and I hope at some point that it will. That's all. Thank you.
Is that, raise a question that referred to the chapter and section on Mass General Law or?
Right. It basically says that the Planning Board is the body that is to adopt the plan and supposed to review it on a yearly basis and it's never been done. And I realize that arguments that why it's been going the way it has, but I just need, think we should at some point clarify Mass General Laws as to whether we are actually abiding by them. That's all.
Oh, yeah, I can take that too. So, you know, based on chapter 41, section 81D, you know, Planning Board time to time can create and make a master plan and then extend or perfect such plan, you know, whether it be through text, maps, illustrations, appendices, overtime. I know some communities that make updates yearly. I know some communities that haven't done updates since they were originally adopted. But, you know, I think through this plan, the Planning Board and, you know, being relatively new and kind of looking at the breakdown of this master planning process, the idea is to establish goals and policies, elements of housing, natural cultural resources, economic development, looking how land use is currently and how what our expectation of land use in the future is. You know, tying this in with open space and recreation plans and circulation and just establishing some sort of matrix for implementation are key elements of that Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81D. So, you know, it's having these ideas from the Planning Board and having public input as part of this process, but as well as creating strategy, working with staff and the town and board members to be on top of this plan and making it a public record and making it a public record when we decide to amend such plan and kind of keep tabs on progress of this plan. And, you know, looking to the future as well when we have a project come before the board, looking to see if certain projects fit with the goals of the master plan as well as looking at our zoning ordinance. So it's just another element of how the board can take up certain projects and if they feel that certain projects or ideas or concepts does not fit that master plan, the board has the ability to amend said master plan or feel that a project isn't adequate for the town due to its inability to kind of fit with the current master plan.
I understand that, Shane. My only point, and I made prior to your coming here, is that the, as far as I know, that the Planning Board has never reviewed on a yearly basis, the master plan and that this, the initial, the beginning of this plan, the startup of it, was not done by the Planning Board. And I'm not saying it was something fishy or anything wrong. I'm just saying, based on my reading in Mass General Laws, that we have not abided by those laws, that it's, it started elsewhere and it's come to us and we are approving it. I understand that.
Sure.
Saying, I think at some point that there should be some clarification, maybe through council or whatever about where this should start and who should be doing the review. And so, I'm fine. I said I'm going to vote for it. That's not just making a comment. That's all.
Sure.
So I, right, I don't want to interrupt you. Are you all set with the comments?
I'm all set, yeah, I'm all set.
So I reviewed the comments that we made in regards to mixed use. That looks like that's been corrected through adaptive reuse. That looks like it did get moved to the cultural section. And a few other things look like that. The one thing I did point out to Jennifer and Shane this evening is that the map on 2.1 still appears to be wrong. And I think Shane is going to work to update that this week and beginning of next week. So that, that map does need to be updated. It's showing a lot of the open space areas as institutional lands and Shane explained that to me. That's a coding issue with the assessors department?
Yeah, it's, I think it's just a, I wouldn't say it's an error on their part. I would say that typical use codes and for property type classifications classify a lot of parks in recreational areas as what typical use codes are. So when you see an assessor's card, there's a use code number that's, if, if it's a an institutional number, it's 9XX or something. So one of the numbers I used as an example was 912, which is for properties that are, let me pull it up for, I think, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife Environmental Law Enforcement. So what I'm trying to explain is that through the mapping process, they codified it based on that initial use code number nine. So all that blue coloring is based on institutional. So it groups in colleges and a lot of tech, totally exempt taxation properties, whereas it's not really based on the actual use where it should be open space in like recreational space, but more so from a tax standpoint. Because typically you'd be, they'd be grouped into a taxation standpoint as like a number two, which is open space or different land designated under Chapter 61.
Okay, so we have, we have to get that updated. That's, that's going to be updated.
Sure.
So maybe a question is for Jennifer. So this, this started what, three years ago roughly?
I believe so, yes.
It was prior to the pandemic. So the pandemic's really
Yes.
wrinkling, right?
Correct.
And at that time, we appointed, so at that time, I think we did have a discussion with the board about this subcommittee, so to speak, that'd be appointed to work on it and then presented to us, correct?
I'd have to go back. I mean, probably, but I don't have, I'd have to go back to looks. I don't want to say yes. If somebody tell me I'm wrong, so.
Did this come out of a planning budget or was this how like the council paid, who paid?
The council appropriated money for this and the zoning codification at the same time.
Do we know what this, just if we wanted to do this more regularly, do we know what this cost?
I don't off the top of my head because it's paid out of the town manager's budget, so I don't pay the bills.
When it, when it extended, did it, did it, was the contract extended for more money or was that all done under the same appropriation?
The contract was extended to include, we added more for implementation because initially implementation was a part of the original budget, but I don't think the pandemic extended the contract price.
So if we wanted to do an annual update like Shane suggested or Ray mentioned, and we want to review it, and I think I planned it.
I, I think if we were going to do an annual update, it wouldn't require a consultant. I don't think annually, you would need to hire a consultant for, this is a large project to do. You know, I think if we were going to do an annual update, the staff could work on that with the board.
I was just trying to get a reference by as to what this cost if it was extended.
I can find out. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I can get those numbers for the board.
Do we have any other board comments?
I guess I would just suggest if we were going to do it on a yearly basis, we would focus on say, one chapter or one area, like maybe every few months. So that We don't have to, sorry, Astrid. It's okay. It was, it's an idea so that we're not reviewing it all at once. I was just going to say, I don't think an annual update is necessary. I mean, annually, you have to report on progress. I would say every five to 10 years, an update is probably necessary because you'll have made progress within five to 10 years. So there'll be things to change. You'll have different goals at that point. But to actually update annually, I think you'll be spinning your wheels. You'll never have anything done within it. Like, you know what I'm saying? You won't achieve a lot of the goals within a year. So to update it, I think will be wasteful.
Yeah, and to counter, and to piggyback on that statement too, I think the goal here is to look at that implementation matrix that we're looking at and look at achievable goals and progress in terms of things that we've placed on that implementation tool and see how the town can achieve some of these goals and see if we've been achieving them as well as making Planning Board decisions that, you know, reference the master plan and are in accordance with the master plan too. In terms of data, the only data sets that I could see coming through the woodworks is to be some Census 2020 data, but I think the Barrett Planning Group did a lot of good work in terms of providing up-to-date data from Census 2020 as well as some projections through ACS that, you know, we're not going to be looking at a lot of data sets. You're not going to actually see a lot of data sets that are updated yearly, but it's just going to be ideally looking at that implementation and see what we can accomplish through grants and other achievable things through that.
If I may, I would, I agree. I mean, obviously, we can't update every year, but, but I would then simply recommend that we schedule next summer that we report on the progress of the plan. That'd be put on the agenda for whatever date.
Happy to do that.
Mr. McDonald, any comments?
Nope, nothing for me on this.
Do we feel comfortable? I mean, we have to have a map updated. I think we're there. Do we want to vote on it tonight or do we want to just agree to just fix the map then vote on it at the next meeting? How do we want to handle that? Because a map doesn't need to be updated.
I'm, if, since you brought the map up, I mean, if you're okay with checking the, the update, correcting the map, I'm okay in voting on it tonight with the fact
Well, I don't, I don't need to check it. What, what, what Shane could do is, is update the map and send it out to everybody, right?
Yeah, I can provide this as a planner report for an upcoming meeting. I'm happy to do that.
Looking for one other time. Do we have any? Are there any members of the public to use a vote on? Have more signed on?
Nope, just, just the one.
Do we have any public comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Carlton. Shane, thank you for your comments on that. I appreciate that. I've ran the master plan implementation committee that actually implemented the 2002 master plan and updated in 2014. As you mentioned, that it could be updated regularly. I think the, your comment on focusing on the near-term, short-term goals as you go forward is important, but again, as you move forward in the plan, those medium-term and those longer-term things become shorter and shorter term if you're not implementing them. So I think that's a good thing. I also remind the Planning Board that the town council is looking at having a review and how we're doing against the master plan comments as part of their oversight perspectives going forward. So those are my comments. I think my question is, if you change that map, Shane, will that change any of the discussion points in the document?
I would say that table 2.2, the, which is directly after that, isn't reflective of the current map because if you can, you can see the, the table afterwards, it mentions that the, the high volume of open space that exists in the town of Bridgewater, it says about 10%. But if you look at that map, you can clearly see that that number doesn't really representative of that map. Whereas you can see a lot of institutional spaces, a lot of blue on that map. So I believe the table is reflective of that, but I can just kind of pan over that table and that map for that information because that table is tied to that map and I want to make sure that that's accurate.
Thank you. That, that's, that's excellent. I've also noted that the town, the state owns 43 billion dollars worth of land in this town. And that map and that table
Is it a million?
It may be million. It's, it's, it's at least nine, 10 digits. It's probably a million, but there is a list that covers somewhere between five and 10 pages of Massachusetts state property owned in Bridgewater, of which, and, oh, I know, they valued the land at 43 million or something. But that is available and I think that needs to be mapped in there. I, I've, I've also mapped a lot of the state loaned in and found the inconsistencies within that map that you're referring to and also the table. I just want to make sure that any text that's associated with that table is also updated. And because of my experience with the master plan and I was on the master plan committee, comprehensive master plan committee, in case you hadn't been told that, I think you have to review the changes in that map against the table and against the text. And therefore, I would encourage you not to adopt it tonight.
So we would not be, we would not be making the changes. We would just be putting together a list of what needs to be changed and providing that to the consultant, who I'm sure would be comparing and making sure that there was no text that needed to be changed.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize. Thank you, Jennifer. I didn't know the consultant was involved. Last like her comment, she said is they're out of the picture now. So apparently, we're going to have to get some more money to them, but that's, that's, that's up to you guys. But I'm just saying, there are changes in the document that may result in the text and even in some of the options and stuff that were recommendations that may be affected by that table. I, just me, I've done this for 15 years, so.
I, I, just back on that comment, I think that table is accurate based on my looking at it. I think the map is just reflective of use code numbers. So that map that was created is based on assessors' use codes and it does note that on the map. So rather than, for that map to be more accurate, I guess, you, that map should be labeled a assessor's use code map. But the way that we're kind of portraying it is through the master plan is what that use of land is, not really from an assessor's code perspective, but an actual land use perspective.
I concur with that kind of change also, but I appreciate you identifying that as a problem or Pat identifying as a problem. I've tried to make that point several times, but I didn't have the right language. Thank you.
Sure.
So, Mr. Jemian, to your point, where the planning board owns the document, I don't know if I said this in this meeting or last meeting, but it seems like most towns, the planning board is listed under acknowledgements. Would the board like to have the, the planning board listed on that page as well? We own the document. We're voting on it. I think we should probably be listed as owning it, so to speak. If not, we can leave it alone.
I'm not sure. Just clarify what you just said, Pat. What do you mean by, what, where are you talking about?
On page two of the documents is acknowledgements. It says Comprehensive Master Plan Committee and it lists Mr. Bernard, Mr. Callahan, et cetera, and then it goes on town staff, Mr. Dutton, Mrs. DeBogrian, Barrett Planning Group, McMahon Associates. It seems like we, just to keep it professional and everything, we should have the planning board listed. It's our document, so to speak.
I agree.
That's not a problem at all.
All right. So we, are we comfortable with, it seems like all the text that we had changed, asked to be changed, was changed. Are we comfortable with voting on adopting it? And if there's substantial changes, I guess we could always do an amendment, adopt those pages as an amendment, Shane, correct?
Yeah, I don't see, if the board doesn't have any questions about any other substantial changes. I know this has been kind of a, a, a long process and I think the Barrett Group's done a very good job with this plan. But, you know, there's little things in terms of maps that we can definitely fix and some things that the board has noticed. But, yeah, I, I don't see that this adoption of this document being an issue or of this master plan. I think it's a quality plan that'll serve the town right.
Any other board discussion or public discussion?
Yeah, will, will the town own the GIS layers? That, I think Shane, you are an expert. I was told that. Will the town own those layers so we can update them as needed internally?
I wouldn't consider myself a major expert in GIS. I do utilize it while there are people better than I am, but yes, I, we would have access to GIS layers as part of this.
Okay, last chance for comments for anybody? If there's no comments, it's not a public hearing, so we don't have to close it. Are we comfortable with voting on it with the changes discussed this evening?
I said before, I'm okay with it as long as Shane, you were, based on what you said about the table being okay.
Well, based, based on the schedule we've been running for Planning Board, you guys will see me weekly, so you can ask me weekly for the entirety, entirety of my tenure.
If for some reason you find it's, it's more complex than what we're discussing this evening, we can always have those pages come back and just vote on those as amended pages.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we won't send it. So normally after it's adopted, it has to go to the state and then the town council just for, they don't do anything with it, just for their information. We won't send it to anybody until those pages are finished and you've looked at them again.
Does anybody want to make a motion to adopt the master plan presented with the amendments discussed this evening?
Yeah, I'll make that. I'll make a second.
So a motion by Mr. Jemian, second by Mr. McDonald?
Yep.
Discussion? Ms. Ross?
I, I vote to approve that. No discussion.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. Moving on, I think we have minutes to approve. So we have meeting minutes for February 2nd and March 16th. Is there anybody that would like to make a motion on those or discuss those notes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Jemian, do a second.
Yeah, second that.
Mr. McDonald? Any discussion? Ms. Ross?
No discussion.
Yes or no? Vote.
She can't vote. She wasn't here. Well, she was, I guess.
I vote to approve the meetings.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Do we have any board committee or planners reports?
No, just let me know if you're available for next week's meeting. I'll have an agenda reviewed and sent around for tomorrow for the two zoning ordinances. So if you have any questions or comments, ideally not discussing it right now. But feel free to shoot me an email or comment for that meeting. And then we have a meeting 6-1, Wednesday after, so.
And so that, that meeting on 6-1 is a special permit? Mr. Jemian, you will not be here, correct?
The chances of me not being at the meeting are pretty good right now. It's not definite, but.
Is there, if there's anybody else that won't be at the meeting, we should tell the applicant we're going to continue it because we need four at least?
Well, we should tell, tell him anyway that as it stands right now, we're meeting unanimous vote so that he can make the decision whether or not he wants to proceed.
Okay, do we, do we have anybody else to think? I know Mr. Gal is not here. Okay, do we, do we have anybody else to think? I know Mr. Gal is not here.
He said he would, he would be there only first.
We, we do have a street exceptions referral as well that would be placed on that meeting agenda.
That's correct.
Could you just clarify next week's meeting?
Is two public hearings that are joint meetings with the CED Committee of Council. One of which being the Main Street zoning map and the other being a adult housing ordinance.
Think that makes those mean that. Meeting on the twenty-fifth, we mean that we meet, have met every week this month.
That is correct.
Do we, I take it we're not gonna get paid overtime for this?
I don't.
Maybe I'll bring you a little prize, Ray. How about that?
Do one meeting in July and one meeting in August. How's that sound?
Can, we can, yeah, I, I've, I think we have a lighter agendas moving forward.
This is stressful.
I'm sorry. I've, I've brought in good luck. Now we'll try to, we'll try to.
While I was still on Zoom, you can put wine in your cup and nobody will know, so if you wanna do it.
Is that based on your, not, your, just general knowledge, Pat, or is it?
Experience.
I need to stay focused. All right. Now it is, we've had a lot of stuff going on, so it is, it is.
You've been busy.
It is a commitment, so. Are you glad you signed up for this aspect?
Say that again.
Meeting every week?
Was I ready for the, a re-meeting this week?
Have you signed up for this meeting every week?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. As long as it's just May.
We wanna make a motion to adjourn or we can.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
We couldn't hear you.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Have a good Wednesday.